Hey, we are now live on YouTube. Need a minute to get the live transition to the website. Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Queens Borough President land use, hybrid land use public hearing. This hearing is taking place both in person at Borough Hall at one twenty dash fifty-five Queens Boulevard in Kew Gardens and on our website at www dot queens VP dot org. I am Vicky Garvey, the Director of Land Use for Borough President Donovan Richards, and I will be chairing this land use public hearing on his behalf. For those who wish to testify virtually and haven't already pre-registered to do so, please visit www dot queens BP dot org backslash land use. If you are here, if you are attending our hearing in person, please see our staff to sign up for public speaking time. If you've not already done so, please note that your opportunity to speak may follow those who are pre-registered. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify. All written testimony must be received by five PM today and may be submitted by email to planning two, the number two, at queens BP dot org or by conventional mail sent to the Office of the Queens Borough President at one twenty dash fifty-five Queens Boulevard, room two-two-six, Kew Gardens, New York, one-one-four-two-four. Lisa, please review how this public hearing will proceed.
Certainly. The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will be called to give a description of the zoning action requested, an explanation of the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the chair. The floor will then be opened for public speakers. Please listen for your name to be called. Each speaker will have three minutes. A signal will be heard and notice will be displayed when three minutes have passed. When you are called, please identify yourself for the record and if you are formally speaking as a representative or member of a group, the calendar number or application you are speaking about, and whether you are for or against an item. Then you may begin your testimony. At the discretion of the chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against that item may also be called to testify in an alternating basis. Please note that if you are testifying virtually, you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. If at any point you have any technical issues, please let our planning staff know in the chat and we will assist you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Lisa. You've just been advised on the proceedings of this hearing and how it will be conducted. The chair reserves the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding the applications or comments. So Lisa, please call first calendar item.
Calendar item number one, ULP number two-two-zero-one-eight-five ZMQ. The applicant is Buckley Realty Corporation and affected community board number seven. Applicant, please begin your testimony.
Good morning. Amanda Ionati from Sheldon Loubel PC. I'm joined this morning by Diana Darpino, applicant and owner of the site, as well as Victor Falletti, project architect. We're here this morning to present the twenty-seven twenty-four College Point Boulevard Commercial Overlay Rezoning. Project description, this is a zoning map amendment to rezone portions of Queens Block four-two-nine-two, lots ten, eleven, twelve, sixty, and seventy-five within Queens Community District Seven from existing split R-four and R-five-B residential districts to merely add a C-two-three commercial overlay. So C, uh, R-four, C-two-three, and R-five-B, C-two-three with no change to the underlying residential zoning district. The proposed zoning map amendment will facilitate the development of a new one-story commercial building with a total floor area of approximately twenty-five hundred square feet to be constructed at twenty-seven twenty-four College Point Boulevard, block four-two-nine-two lot twelve, located at the corner of College Point and Twenty-Eighth Avenue. The proposed development will consist of a use group six eating and drinking establishment with an accessory drive-through and five accessory parking spaces will be located in the rear. Also, within the project area, lots ten and eleven are two legal non-conforming commercial buildings with COs from nineteen fifty-five that will be fully legalized with the new commercial overlay. A little bit of site history, nineteen forty-seven, there was a variance to permit a use group sixteen gasoline and automotive service station at the site. In two thousand, that variance was reinstated for another ten-year term. In two thousand and eleven, the underground storage tanks were actually removed and soil was also removed and remediated. In two thousand and twelve, there was another BSA variance application to permit a two-story use group six commercial bank with drive-through and parking. Twenty thirteen, DEC issued the spill case closure letter. And in two thousand and fourteen, there was an extension of time to complete construction of the BSA-approved use group six bank. Since then, the applicant has had trouble finding a bank tenant to occupy the BSA-approved building in accordance with the BSA-approved plans. So they initiated the current rezoning to have additional flexibility to find a commercial tenant. Here's the zoning map showing the existing split residential zoning. The tax map shows a better view of the proposed rezoning area. Again, the development site is at the corner of College Point Boulevard and Twenty-Eighth Avenue outlined in red. The two existing commercial buildings are really the only other lots included here that will be legalized, lots ten and eleven, and little portions of lot sixty and seventy-five are in the boundary to round out the rezoning area. The area map shows why the commercial use at the development site is appropriate. You can see existing manufacturing just south across Twenty-Eighth Avenue, also east across College Point Boulevard, directly across College Point Boulevard is actually another gas station. Some photos of the site. Here you can see at the corner of College Point. Again, these are the existing legal non-conforming commercial buildings that are within the rezoning area that will be fully legalized with the C-two-three commercial overlay. And a few other views here is on the side of Twenty-Eighth Avenue at the corner. And here's the site plan, Victor, if you just wanna give a little bit on the design.
Sure. Good morning. So first drawing eight two-point-O is a site survey of the property showing the vacant lot, zoning map, and tax map. Next slide. This is a proposed site plan. We have a one-story building, eating and drinking with a drive-through lane. The building is pretty much the largest footprint that we could fit on the property with the parking and the drive-through. It is one-story high. Next slide. Zoning calculations of the existing and proposed. A five-point-O, the building will have a cellar with two means of egress. This plan shows open plan for that cellar, which would be an accessory use to the eating and drinking establishment on the first floor. Next. This is a floor plan of the first floor that we proposed. The two means of egress out of the cellar entrance off of College Point Boulevard and then exit at the parking lot side as well. Roof plan of the one-story building. These are illustrative elevations of the proposed building. College Point Boulevard would have the main entrance, large expanse of glass storefront. Next slide. Side elevation facing the parking lot with the egress doors for the exit out of the cellar, the drive-through window and access to the building from the parking lot as well. The Twenty-Eighth Avenue facade would also have large expanse of glass storefronts. The building is within the maximum perimeter wall height of thirty feet. The proposed building height is fourteen feet to the top of the roof with a three-foot parapet guard around the top of the roof, making the ultimate to the top of the wall seventeen feet. This is a section shown of the building. We would have a full cellar with an approximate eight-to-nine-foot clear ceiling height. Again, the top of the roof of the building would be fourteen feet with structure and mechanical taking up some space to about a twelve-foot ceiling height in the eating and drinking establishment. That's it.
Tonight concludes our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you both so much. I think the only thing I wanted to ask for the record is, was there any discussion at the Board Seven meeting about this application? I do see that it was it was voted favorably, but just wanted to understand if there was any sort of questions or concerns there for the record.
Yeah, yeah, sure. We were happy to get an unanimous approval, but there was some discussion about safety with patrons walking from the building back to the parking spaces with the drive-through lane in between. So the applicant is happy to provide any safety measures that the community board recommended, including striping and a speed bump around the drive-through lane area to make sure that everyone's going slow and there's no accidents between the patrons and the drive-through.
Okay, thank you. That's good to hear. I don't have any further questions and I do not see anyone sign up to publicly testify on this item, so I'm just gonna go ahead and close this calendar item. So thank you very much, applicant team, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Calendar item number two, ULP number two-three-zero-two-seven-six ZMQ. The applicant, Lucky Supply Holding LLC, affected community board number two. Applicant, please begin.
Okay, good morning. My name is Josh Ryan Smith from Ackerman LLP. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant Lucky Supply Holding in connection with this ULP application. Bear with me one second. Okay, so Lucky Supply operates a restaurant supply business at the property known as fifty-eight seventy-five Midtown Expressway in the Masbeth neighborhood of Queens. The project site is also located within the Masbeth Industrial Business Zone. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an M-one-one zoning district to an M-one-four district to facilitate the enlargement of their existing one-story warehouse building. And the proposed enlargement will enable the applicant to increase onsite inventory, thereby increasing efficiency and allowing them to remain competitive within the restaurant supply business for years to come. The subject site is designated as lot sixty-four and block twenty-six fifty-six and is outlined by the dash red line you're seeing on the area map. The rezoning area, which encompasses a little less than half of this block, is sandwiched between the Queens Midtown Expressway to the south, Fifty-Fourth Avenue and Mount Zion and Calvary Cemeteries to the north. And the easternmost boundary of the block is Maurice Avenue, which is a key north-south corridor. Just east of the block in the rezoning area is Frank Principi Park. And as I had mentioned previously, the rezoning area is located within the Masbeth IBZ, which is an area designated by the city to protect and grow industrial businesses by excluding new residential uses and provided targeted support through business support services and area-wide improvements. Here we have two aerial views of the site. The top photo is taken directly from above while the bottom photo is facing the site from the, taken from the north looking south from Fifty-Fourth Avenue. As you can see, the areas to both the north and south of the expressway are heavily industrial and commercial in character. The subject site is currently improved with a one-story warehouse building that is owned and occupied by the applicant. The building was built in nineteen sixty-nine and has approximately seventy thousand square feet of floor area in a building height of a little under nineteen feet. And here is just a Google street view of the project site. This is from Queens Midtown Expressway looking north. And then we have one from Fifty-Fourth Avenue looking southeast. You can see the expressway in the background on the right. The rezoning area is located, or the site is currently zoned N-one-one and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning resolution in nineteen sixty-one. Excuse me. M-one-one zones allow for a range of traditional industrial uses, commercial uses, and some community facility uses and has a maximum FAR of one-point-O for manufacturing and commercial use. Unfortunately, the district's low permitted FAR and high parking requirements significantly restrict the applicant's ability to expand their business and remain competitive. The zoning change map that you see on the right shows the proposed rezoning area delineated by the black dots around the, what would be the western portion of the block. And it encompasses predominantly just two tax lots, lots twenty and sixty-four, and then just small slivers of two additional tax lots to the east, lots sixty-five and one-fifteen. The proposed rezoning to the M-one-four zoning district will result in a modest change in FAR from one-point-O to two-point-O. And the applicant intends to continue its current operation as a restaurant supply business and seeks to enlarge the one-story building to a three-story warehouse. So here's a site plan of the proposed enlargement. And as I mentioned, the requested zoning map amendment will facilitate the enlargement of the existing one-story building, both vertically and horizontally to better accommodate warehouse space for inventory, offices, parking, and a new loading berth. The enlarged building will have approximately one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand square feet of manufacturing floor area and a two-point-O FAR. There will be three stories along the Queens Midtown Expressway frontage, but will be stepped back twenty feet from the street line before rising to the three stories. And then on the Fifty-Fourth Avenue street frontage, it'll step down to just two stories. The existing curb cut that we have on Fifty-Fourth Avenue will remain. And we're proposing a new fifteen-foot curb cut on Queens Midtown Expressway that will allow cars to enter and park within the building and then exit onto Queens Midtown Expressway. So here you're looking at the first floor plan. The green is existing floor area with the red being the proposed horizontal enlargement. So the first floor will be largely warehousing. We are able to add a new bike room, an additional loading berth, as well as a driveway with accessory parking for nine cars. And I'll note that I believe four of these parking spaces will be equipped with EV charging stations. The driveway will allow the accessory cars to park or to enter from Fifty-Fourth Avenue and exit directly onto Queens Midtown Expressway. The second floor will have, you know, just actually move on to a section drawing. So here we have the majority of the existing building. And then the second floor would be pretty much used exclusively for storage for the restaurant supply business as well as the new third floor. And again, the green is denoting the existing floor area with the red being the proposed enlargement. Here we have renderings of what the facade would look like from the north. So this would be looking from Fifty-Fourth Avenue. The one showing the loading bays would be looking sort of southeast. And then the one on the bottom is looking directly south with the loading bays here on the right. Then we have a south facade. So this is the three-story portion of the building. The exit to the driveway is on your left and the building's main entrance will be right here on Queens Midtown Expressway as well. That's really the summary of our application. Lucky Supply Holdings has been a successful restaurant supply business and feels that it needs the proposed zoning map amendment to facilitate its construction, to better serve its clients. In addition, the proposed rezoning will actually allow it to better handle loading and traffic in the area, which we anticipate will reduce some of the on-street congestion. So with that, I thank you for the time and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I really just have one follow-up question. So at the Board Two meeting, there was a discussion about installing green infrastructure along the sidewalk as a condition to their approval. And so I just wanted to ask, how feasible is it to install this infrastructure? And what types are you looking at, just so we have an idea?
So what we're looking to install are bio slails in the sidewalk and street tree planting that would be able to collect rainwater and slowly infiltrate it into the groundwater system. And then one other additional green feature that we are proposing is solar panels on the roof of the second floor. To, I can't commit that the amount of solar that would be able to generate would enable us to operate completely off the electric grid, but certainly reduce the demand that the proposed business would have. So those are the two green features that we're looking to implement.
Oh, great. Generally speaking, we do agree with any sort of sustainable improvements to the site. So would love to see these these infrastructure ideas actually be implemented. I don't have any further questions and I don't see anyone sign up to publicly testify. So we can go ahead and close this calendar item and move on. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Calendar item number three, ULP number two-four-zero-zero-seven-five ZMQ. The applicant is the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services. Affected community board number eleven. Applicant, please begin.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Alex Truskowski. I'm a planner at DCAST and I am joined by my colleagues Kyle Daniels and Chris Grove. And we are presenting on the proposed the ULP disposition approval of four sliver lots in Queens Community District eleven. I am about to share my screen. Whoops. Okay. Sorry. Just prepare with me a moment.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you. That's again. Perfect.
We can see your screen. We could just minimize notification on the bottom right. Thank you.
Yes. All right. So we are, once again, posing, we are here describing the four lots that are in public review for disposition. These are four sale-away lots. So there are four slivers in Queen City eleven, meaning that they are too small to be developed in their own right. And DCAST defines a lot that's, or defines slivers that are as lots that are either shorter than ten feet in any one dimension or less than a hundred feet in total square footage. So the impetus for this was, there was some interest locally that in the city selling the lot near Elbaco to one of the abutters. And in reviewing that request, we were able to, for the sake of efficiency, review the other sliver lots that exist in the same community district because the way that ULP works makes it such that multiple lots can be disposed of in the same community district in the same application. So these, these four lots were identified, these four lots were all identified as being eligible for sale away, which means that in, in contrast to our normal disposition process by which we hold a public auction, DCAST would offer these properties to the abutters at market value. And this would be beneficial because, for multiple reasons, it would benefit those abutters locally and it would benefit those neighborhoods because they would be able to maintain those lots that are already near the lots that they currently own. And it would also add tax revenue in the form in, you know, from all of those lots. So just a quick overview of the four lots in question. And so here's the zoning map highlighting four lots. The two, the two lots in block eight-one-three-six are very close to one another, which is why they're being represented by the same circle. Okay, the first lot that we're discussing is block eight-one-three-six, lot seventy-four. It's a one-foot wide sliver in between a few residential lots near Little Neck Parkway. Right off the bat, I do want to point out that we don't have a survey for any of these lots. So the, the location of the location of these lots is approximate. Sorry. The location of these lots, as we represent them in this map, is not exact. We have requested survey for all four lots and that might come later, but so this, this lot is roughly the width of this concrete wall here, this retaining wall that you can see in pictures, two and three. But again, this is sort of an approximation and the lot extends from Little Neck Parkway to the middle of the block, the block's interior. And we're looking at a two-hundred-seven square foot lot in an R-three-one zone. Okay, so in the same block, another one-foot lot, one-foot wide lot, beginning where the previous lot ends and extending into the middle of, some perpendicular from that lot, into the middle of the block. And it's roughly, we think, coterminous with this one-foot wide curb here on the ground. And it's worth noting that Forty-first Road is still mapped through this lot. And it's worth noting that forty first road is still mapped through this lot. Um, even though it is not built. And um, for that reason, um. For for that reason, this uh, this lot. Um. Might be reapportioned so that DOT or in the city can retain the piece of this lot that. Is in the forty first road right of way. Um, but other and. Uh, disposing of the pieces to the left and the right of that right of way. Um. So the next uh, the next lot is um block eight, one, eight, five, lot fifty eight. Um, it is on the corner of Rushmore Avenue and two hundred forty fourth street. Um, it is a few feet wide and it's sort of this triangular shape and it roughly corresponds with. Part of this driveway and um and this wall here that you see. Um, it probably doesn't extend farther than where this pole is here. Um, and finally, we have the El Baco lot, which we've. I sort of roughly drew where where we think the limits of this lot are. Um, so it's adjacent to. The El Baco building. It's part of this driveway and it's um. It is subject to an easement by which. Uh. The owner is not allowed to obstruct the driveway. Um, so this is a historic easement. Um, that has been extant since the fifties. Uh, designed to sort of protect the interests of all of the. The business, businesses adjacent to this parking lot here, which all use this driveway as access. Um. And this easement which exists in perpetuity states that um. This driveway can't be obstructed. So if this were, if this lot were sold to an abutter. Um, they would not be able to build anything here. Um, or at least anything on the ground. Um, which is I I think an important distinction to make. Um, and the the lot is eight feet wide. And it's in a commercial overlay and an R one two zone. Um, and with that, that's sort of the entire summary. Um, and we'll be happy to take any questions that you have. Um. Yeah, and I'll be happy to pan to any of the four sites if you have specific questions about any of them.
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, I guess I just wanna state for the record that Board eleven. Conditionally approved this entire application, but they did also take. Three or four separate votes on each lot.
Um, yes.
Which had in eh had some interesting comments. Um, and I I I guess I wanna focus on. Block eighty one eighty five, lot fifty eight.
Yes.
So I have in my notes here that a board member explained that. That lot is part of a pathway that's maintained by the community, the dead end that you had uh pointed out there. So a a couple of follow-up questions just related to that lot in particular. Um. The dead end there, is that in the bed of street?
Yes, so um, so this. Continuation of two hundred forty fourth street or two, maybe two hundred forty fifth uh. Uh, we may be looking at. Um, this is, this is a mapped but unbuilt street. Where it is adjacent to this lot. Um, if you can see in in picture one. The the path that the the board member was talking about. Um, but also in the pa- in this picture, you can see this um. This uh pole, which we think is. The, the farthest extent of where this lot could be. Um, so I think roughly this triangle extends from this pole to the middle of this driveway in picture two. Uh, when I um clarified this to the board member and. Essentially clarified that this lot is not actually in the path. Um, they said that they understood that, but it was more of just the principle that. Selling this lot in their opinion would sort of um. Create opportunities for more encroachment onto the path. Um, so it's, it was less of a. So there was an understanding that this lot is not actually in the path, but it was rather uh trepidation about the lot being very close to the path. That led the board to vote down this particular lot.
I see, cuz I think, yeah, logically. Just following that line of logic. The question would be, couldn't DCAST transfer jurisdiction of that sliver lot to either DOT or parks since there does seem to be some. Greenery or. I wouldn't say community garden, but looks like it's just maintained um at least, but the sliver lot seems to. Have some development. Directly abutting it or actually on the lot. I just wanna make sure I understand.
It's, it appears that the existing property owner on lot fifty three is is squatting on it effectively. Eh, the, this driveway was rebuilt and it was rebuilt. Overlapping with lot fifty eight. So I I don't. Uh, so it's, it it does seem like this board member was, is unhappy that 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 happened. Um, but um, that said, the, the area that lot fifty eight covers is not. Entirely green space. Um, it's, it it is partly developed, yes.
Okay, okay, understood. Um, otherwise, you know, the other three lots, you know, in question. Makes sense based on the nature of where they're located and um their size. So I don't have any other questions, um, and I don't see anyone. Signed up to publicly testify, so we can go ahead and close this item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so with that. We will close the hearing. Um, our next scheduled hybrid land use public hearing is Thursday, April fourth, twenty twenty four. Starting at nine thirty AM. I wanna thank everyone for joining us today and I hope everyone has a great day. So thank you very much.